You all set to start, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, I am.
Good. We're gonna call the meeting to order at it looks like 6:02, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice for all. Okay, I don't see any adjustments. Is that correct, Matt?
Correct.
Okay, and I will make a motion to approve the minutes from January 20th, our executive session at 3:00 PM, January 25th, budget workshop at 4:00 PM, January 25th, regular meeting at 6:30 PM, and January 27th, budget workshop at 4:00 PM. And we have second, sorry, second from Mr. Manks. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All in favor. How's your name, Mr. Matt?
Thank you.
Next section we have is public comments. And I believe we have some folks on the Zoom that wanted to make comments tonight from emails that I saw. Um, so, hold on just a sec. If you are on and you'd like to make a public comment, uh, do you guys know how to use the raised hand thing on Zoom? Okay, so maybe that won't work. Let's go where they saw. What is it? Vicki Thomas? Would you like to go first, Vicki?
Nope, she, uh, she's one of our school counselors, Dawn. She may want to, um, but, uh...
I was answering that I knew how to use the raised hand thing. Because you had asked that question, so I was like, yeah, I know how to use it.
Okay, I just wanna look through and see if it looks like... Oh, here we go. Evan Levesque, Levite, Levite, I see. Some people do have the French pronunciation, some people don't. I took a gamble and went the wrong way.
Yeah, it's Levesque, Evan Levesque.
Hey, there you go. This would be, uh, your time to make some comment. So, did you jump on it?
Well, thanks for taking the time. I just wanted to kind of voice a little bit of concern about the kids going back to school. And I wanted to first off, thank everybody that's, you know, part of the school system and that goes to work every day. And I know it's been a challenging year. And we really appreciate what everybody's been doing on the teacher front and the staff and whatnot. And just wanted to thank everybody there first. But I just have, I'll make some comment, and I wanted to really just maybe pose some questions if at all possible. But I just was curious, when I looked down through the situation, I just was wondering if there's any type of view as to when the children are gonna go back to school, you know, four or five days. Feel like it's been some time and, and, um, you know, I feel like the children really haven't had the opportunity to learn in the best way possible, um, like they have in other districts, um, where they're going four days or so. And I think it's really, you know, there's a lot of things that have affected the families and the kids that haven't been able to go to school. And, you know, really, one of the things that I look at is that, you know, we do have some data that it's been pretty safe for the schools that have gone back, um, to the four days. And I just think overall, it's, it's good for the kids. And I think one of the things that crosses my mind is that there's a choice for everybody except for a parent that wants their child to go back to school for four or five days a week. There's a choice of the well, or hy- or hybrid, or homeschooling. But no choice for a child, family, or parents that wanna have them go back to school that four or five days. So I just kinda wanted to pass that along. And then some of the questions that I had was, you know, are we looking at imposing the three-foot rule spacing? That's something that's possible. I know other districts have done that to go back. And then the other question was, would there even be enough staff to do so? I know that's a tough thing. And then really, the, the third question is, how the hell can I help, right, get the kids back at school? So if there's something I can do or get people involved in doing, be more than happy to do that. Uh, but I just, just feel like it's, um, it's setting the children back and, and maybe put a little bit of normalcy in their life. That's, that's all I've got to say.
Hey, Evan, thanks for jumping on and saying that. It's definitely a, a big discussion point now, not just here, but nationwide. Um, and I believe during Mr. Nelson's superintendent report later, we're gonna have a COVID update. And I think he's gonna hit on pretty much all the questions that you just brought up. So, um, I would say now, though, one thing, if you're looking to help, we need substitute teachers. So everybody who knows that wants to be a substitute. It's actually a pretty good deal right now, too. They bumped the money up, so. Okay, great. Thanks for your time, Evan. Uh, do we have anybody else that wants to make a public comment? Did I see anybody else? Going once, going twice? Okay, great. Um, we also did have a couple of emails that came in. Matt, you don't have those right here, do you?
We have another one. I'm just submitting someone right now, Dawn, that I think also has a public comment as well. Danielle.
Yeah, we had another email from a Jesse Martel that was actually advocating against getting the kids back at school, questioning the safety. I'm just paraphrasing through, but that's actually something that came through and Matt sent out to all of us. Uh, just concerned about stopping the spread of COVID. And, uh, I don't think there's anything else. I don't, I wanna make sure I do her email justice because she took time to send us a, a nice, fairly lengthy email going over a number of things, so. Um, who did we have come in then?
I think Danielle also wants to make public comment.
Danielle.
Hi, yeah, just, okay, I'll go now. Sorry. I just wanted to say that I have two children at Carl Lamb right now, one in first grade and one in second grade. And I wanna thank all the teachers at Carl Lamb. They've just done, both their teachers are incredible. They've done an amazing job. Um, and I think that the safety at Carl Lamb has been awesome. Um, I've just experienced in the last about month and a half, my first grader was able to go back four days a week because of her testing results for the NWEA. Um, she actually told me at one point she fell asleep during them, which is never a good thing. So she was able to come back. Um, she's in a Title I math program. And just the difference that I've seen in her has been huge. She, her confidence level, um, she's gone up four reading levels since going back, um, four days a week. And I know the principal had grabbed me at one point. She was concerned because they'd had an incident on the playground with another student. And I guess somehow it came out that my daughter had mentioned she doesn't have any friends and nobody plays with her on the playground, which is so heart-wrenching to hear. But at the same time, how are students supposed to establish relationships with other students when they're only there two days a week? It's really, really difficult. Um, and it's just social skills that kids need to be learning at that age. So I'm really grateful that she's back. My second grader is not back. She's two days a week. She's only been to school nine days since Christmas. And I'm just seeing her. She's just losing focus, um, losing engagement. Uh, she's really, really bright, but I just, I see her starting to pull away. And, um, so it's just been kind of seeing both sides of it. It's been difficult. So I understand that the administration in the school is doing everything to get kids back in a safe manner, which I know all parents really appreciate. Um, but I, I definitely see the benefits of bringing kids back when we can. I know the survey that came out was great. I thought it was lengthy. And I don't know, um, I've done tons of surveys for my company over the years, and it's really difficult to get a response, especially when you give out 28 questions. So, and I thought that one of the questions was somewhat misleading at the end. At this time, I would prefer to continue with the hybrid model. I thought it was ambiguous because, um, some people probably, I know, when I look at that question, I don't wanna go backwards. I think the hybrid model is what it is and it's working. But if we can get kids back full-time, I think that's really the, the goal. And sooner rather than later, so.
Great. Well, hey Danielle, thanks for taking the time to, uh, jump on and give us your, your thoughts tonight. Thanks for the feedback on that survey. I'm sure Mr. Nelson probably did some notes on that. And, uh, like I, we're just jumping on, but I believe later on in Mr. Nelson's update, he's gonna have a COVID section, which will cover some of the stuff about, uh, the return to school and whatnot, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on. Actually, no further public comments. Somebody else come on? Uh, we'll move on to communications. I see none. I don't have any that popped up, do you, Matt?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, committee reports. We'll go to, uh, construction updates. Mr. Nelson.
Sure, so I'll start with the high school and technical center. Um, we've taken a few steps back from the positive news that I shared back at a previous meeting regarding the heating and balancing issues at the high school and the technical center. Uh, we're still waiting to get a balancing report, uh, but we did think that the heating issues were addressed. Uh, we had someone come on, um, onsite. Uh, Briggs Mechanical came onsite. And that was a really big help that they found out that, uh, the settings were off. And so we were able to get everything reset. Everything looked like it was working fine. Uh, if you remember, we did have, um, not last week, but the week before, we had a cold spell. And during that recent cold spell, our units began tripping again. And they weren't operating as designed. And so, um, the first thing we did was we checked the usual problem areas, filters, heat wheels, pump command failures, and everything there checked out fine, um, on that end. So, um, Briggs came back to do an onsite review. And, um, it looks like the airflow changes that were done, um, back, uh, earlier had now reverted back to the default state, which is now back to where the units will trip. And so that was contributing to them, um, tripping. And so, um, we're still waiting on a formal report from Briggs. In the meantime, what the school department is doing is we're looking at securing a maintenance contract uh, to ensure that the system is not changed or completely reset to default, uh, default, which is causing the issues. One thing was, um, I was kind of holding off on the maintenance contract until we were able to get everything taken care of. But I think it makes sense to start having that, uh, establish that maintenance contract now so that they can be part of this process and part of the solutions here and really get to know our system rather than waiting for it, uh, to get ready. Um, also, uh, Siemens can also advise us also on why the system defaulted back, uh, reverted back to that. Uh, we're having a hard time getting our arms around that. Uh, so we've gotta be able to make those same changes over again because in essence, they were, uh, they were undone, uh, which got us back to starting over. And so one of the things that we're gonna do is grant, um, access to, um, RISFRSA, Schumway Engineering and Briggs, uh, so that they can have access to that VAS system so they can advise on what changes do need to be made, um, for that. Um, and so, right now, as we looked at the balancing report back on January 20th, we think that what happened was that the balancer went into a rerun, a report, uh, with that. That's what it looks like, uh, right now. And so, um, we're gonna be holding off on that and looking in, into that as well, um, for that. So that's an update at the high school and the technical center. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with our legal counsel because there is a mediation on Wednesday um, with the contractor in a subcontractor. Um, uh, we've looked at that. We're confident that we don't owe anything and, and really don't feel that there's any basis to their claims. Uh, we've submitted a position statement to the mediator, um, for that. So that mediation, as I said, the pre-meeting is tomorrow, and the mediation itself, uh, will be Wednesday at 10:00 for that. So that's an update on the high school and the technical center. Any questions?
Well, any, any indication, Matt? Both Paul and Vicki have went to coats on, so.
It's freezing.
You can, you can put a priority on that heat job. That'd be great.
Well, I will say this, though. I am glad to hear that you need to put your coats on at 6:15 at night because normally we don't have people here at 6:15 at night, um, for that. So those are some adjustments we might be able to do to help with that. But yeah, that's some of that balancing that we do wanna make sure that the systems are turning on, turning off, and being able to adjust to any cold weather that we have without tripping out.
I think it's just right in here, but I'm like a polar bear, so.
You're not. You don't count.
It's cold. Okay, let's move on to the elementary before this breaks down anymore, Matt.
Sure. Uh, Converted Elementary School, um, first report. The upper level, the Area A, which is gonna be our kindergarten area up by the tennis courts. Uh, the slab infills have been completed. The stud, stud walls are being built, and the drywall is ongoing. Uh, for Area B in the upper level, that's the middle section around the library. Slab trenches are in. They're preparing to finalize the slab infill. The demo is complete. Area, Area B, the lower level, which is behind the library, the slab trenches are mostly filled or are being filled. The gym flooring removal has been completed. The stud wall construction is beginning, and the demo is complete. And then the Area C, lower level, uh, the, uh, that's by the, uh, the school is by, part of the school by Memorial Gym. The demo is near completion. Uh, underground is being installed. Our mechanical sprinkler work is ongoing. The mani- mechanical heating, inventing work is also ongoing throughout. Uh, mechanical plumbing, the underground work is noted above, is nearing completion. And the above ground is ongoing in all phases. The electrical rough install is ongoing throughout. Uh, we do have site work which is on hold until spring. Uh, we are, uh, reviewing a condition of what used to be the old automotive area down in the lower level. And so what we've, um, noticed is the slabs have a topping material that may need to be removed and redone, uh, for us to lay down new flooring. Um, so there's some possibility where there's some oil that's gotten into the slab for that and, um, will make it hard for us to, uh, lay down that flooring. So that's something that, uh, has come up that we're working through. Um, good news that although, although the test results trigger a requirement for a BDA system, um, the fire marshal has indicated the results, uh, follow, they're near a margin in localized area, and so that the BDA system is not gonna be required. So there's gonna be some savings there. Our, our architect and the contractor continue to review the indicated electrical updates being required uh, based on some unforeseen findings. So up in Area A, uh, the contractor's working on revised costs for those updates. In Area B, the architect is investigating, uh, and has a proposal request is being issued, uh, to the contractor. And then in the lower, uh, section, Area C, there's some more demo required before we'll be able to identify all of the requirements. Uh, we have, uh, as part of the local bond, we have requested some changes, um, uh, to be able to be supported by the bond. And so those continue to be designed, priced, and reviewed. We have given our approval for a flooring in the library. Uh, we've also, uh, given approval for removing some of the folding partitions between the classrooms in Section B and a replacement of those partitions with new walls. And then also approval for the, um, um, converted middle school flooring adjustments in the PT room. We've also given, um, okay with that as part of the bond. And then, um, I think the good news is, uh, we had our last meeting last Thursday, and construction progress continues to be on target. Um, there's no reports of any scheduling delays at this time. Uh, we also know, experience tells us that that can change quickly. But at the same time, um, I did wanna update that and share that good news, uh, hopefully in a way that doesn't jinx us going forward. Um, we do have another construction meeting, uh, this Thursday, um, as well. Any questions on the Converted Elementary School?
Did you knock on wood after that last statement, Matt?
I did. I might have, I might have kicked wood, actually, with my knee, uh, as well. So we're beating the wood, uh, with that so that we can be able to not jinx ourselves.
Are there any questions for the elementary? Anybody? No, okay, thanks, Matt. Um, Paula, Sanford Performing Arts Committee, any updates? Anything you'd like to share?
Yes, Brett definitely has a few that he would like to share. So first is that in honor of Black History Month, the Performing Arts Center presented the World Premier Coral Performance of Amazing Grace, the American spiritual that I mentioned, um, last week. Um, it livestreamed, and, um, as of today, so YouTube video has already been streamed over 2,000 times. It was excellent. It was beautiful. Um, so Brett was saying that he considered this show to be the most technically challenging performance in the live streaming series, that it was just crazy and you could hear everybody talking and all the different, and then everybody talking how, how just chaotic it was. And then to see the show and see how quickly it turned out. Really just, um, so proud of the work. Like Amy said, it was really beautiful. I don't know if you guys saw it. Um, you wanted to say a special thank you to Sarah's team and also to the students from the high school and as our T C that worked behind, behind the cameras. So that's Lindsay Brown, Liam Daley, Raiden Bird, Ben Janicek, and Nolan Gonzalez. They did a great job. I'd like to say congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Continue, you put up quality, quality.
Yeah, it was wonderful. Um, as far as the educational connection, I know last week I mentioned that, um, this had a, this, uh, program had an education. So the high school music students are gonna be participating in a Zoom talkback on the 22nd with the soloist and the conductor. And they're gonna be discussing the performance from the standpoint of Black history and artistic development of the show. That's gonna be pretty interesting. Um, let's see. This was our eighth live streaming performance since October. And, um, Brett and everybody in the, those of these performances have helped to raise the profile of the SBAC for our schools and our city as well. And the YouTube analytics show that viewers are watching these performances from all over Maine and Northern England. So we're reaching, which is awesome, international.
We're being in Northern England, apparently. We're trying to keep working on that demographic.
And so much so that other main theaters are looking to us as a model for, um, safely offering live performances. So that's pretty, pretty amazing as well. And then one last thing, just so you know what's, um, coming ahead in the future. The Theater Club is developing protocols to safely present a Best of Broadway musical overview this spring. Um, and it's a way to engage and showcase our talented theater students. And we hope to have students audition on the stage the week after February vacation.
Wow, very exciting.
Lots of good things happening here.
Exciting the prospect of having some stuff when the students come back in.
Yeah.
Um, that's actually a good segue into the WSSR TV update because I think the reason we can have these great broadcasts from the Performing Arts Center is because we have WSSR TV right here. So that definitely makes it a lot easier. Um, and Sarah does a phenomenal job. Um, we have another committee update, so I don't really have any other updates for that. Um, so, and then, uh, we're gonna dump education. Do you have anything for that, Jonathan?
No, uh, no, I haven't. I would be told these are good for a few weeks. But I just, we, we need to be mindful of the great underutilized assets.
Okay, excellent. So that's it for committee reports. Uh, let's move on to the superintendent's report. Uh, we'll have student representative, I think Bella was the only one that I saw on. So Bella, do you have something to share with us?
Um, I do. So I know we read John Paul's email during a meeting. Um, and since then, he has reached out to student representatives. And we've given him that we can. And I think he is going to start a petition, um, to see if students are really committed to, you know, having that conversation um, about going back to a five-block schedule. Um, and I think another good idea that we could do is to send out a student survey to see their thoughts on it and see what percentage of kids are really being impacted by this because I know personally, um, as well as many acquaintances of mine have been affected, um, specifically in not being able to take the elective classes that they really enjoy because of a lack of scheduling space. So I think maybe having, um, the idea of doing a survey would be a good idea to keep in the back of our minds, um, as we get closer.
Great. Um, yeah, thanks, Bella. I know that's, uh, definitely on the radar. I think on tonight's agenda, we have the, the high school schedule as a, uh, topic for a future meeting. So, but I, I'd like to hear about the, uh, the student activism. You guys need to kind of have some voice about what you want, so that's great to hear. Um, okay, I don't think, I know Grace, uh, emailed me and she had basketball practice tonight, which is, once again, exciting to hear about the kids getting back and doing some stuff. So she wasn't sure she was gonna be able to make, uh, the meeting too early. At least she's gonna try to jump on later. Um, she did actually ask me to mention, I believe it's Thursday. Uh, there's a food distribution going on. Yeah, it's gonna be like she's saying at the Sanford High School this Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00. Uh, there's gonna be a backpack program food distribution and then a full semi of food being delivered to the distribution. I know Mr. Manks liked the application of the term semi. That was really cool. So there you go, Grace. I remembered to say it. I usually forget stuff. So, Matt, we're onto you for the, uh, the COVID-19 update.
Sure, so, um, I'll start off, uh, up on the screen. Uh, I have shared the screen. Uh, we did, did a survey to see how the other schools in York County as of the beginning of February in terms of what they are offering, uh, for their different, for their models at the different grade levels, whether it be elementary, middle, or high school. So, um, you can see as we start on that, uh, is, uh, Bitterford and Dayton in Kittery, uh, across the top. Uh, Bitterford for their pre-K through grade eight is in, uh, person four days a week with a one-day flex day. High school, they're in person two days a week. Uh, Dayton does go, is an elementary school K through five. They're in person five days a week. Kittery, pre-K through grade three is in person five days a week. Fourth and fifth grade in person five days a week, but they do get out earlier. Sixth through eighth grade, there's two, uh, cohorts that attend onsite, uh, halftime. So they alternate between in-person and remote. And the high school also has a onsite two-days-a-week cohort. Kennybunk is pre-K through 12 is, uh, in person two days a week and remote two days a week with Wednesdays being all remote. Uh, RSU 23, that's Old Orchard Beach, pre-K through 12 in person four days a week. Wednesdays are all remote. Uh, SAD 6, that's the Bonnie Eagle, um, district, K through 12 in person two days a week, remote three days a week, Wednesdays are remote, similar to Sanford. SAD 57, pre-K through 12 in person five days a week based on capacity. Uh, there is an option that they have for remote. All of their, um, options are that they, uh, don't have a separate remote option if you are working. If you do take the remote option, uh, you do have your classroom teacher who is responsible for both in-person learning as well as, uh, the remote learners. Uh, SAD 60, um, the Noble District, uh, K through five in person four days a week. Grades six and grades 10 are in person two days a week, remote three days. Grades 11 and 12 are in person one day a week, remote four days a week, and Wednesdays are all remote. Uh, our option is we're K through 12 in person two days a week, week, remote, uh, three days a week. Wednesdays are all remote. Uh, SRTC students get four days as well as, uh, special education. Uh, Thornton Academy, grades nine through 12, they're in person two ways, uh, two days a week, remote two days a week, Wednesdays are all remote. Uh, Wells Agunkwick, K through 12 in person five days a week. And then the York School District, K through five is in person five days a week. Grades five through 12 is in person two days a week. In remote, um, three days a week, and Wednesdays. Grades five through 12 is in person two days a week, in remote three days a week, and Wednesdays are all remote for that. We have put together also a survey recently that I was asking all of our York County schools to participate in, trying to look at what we have for the total number of COVID cases in a district and also by the different levels for that. I only have right now, the only people to share their data so far. Bitterford has had 68 total cases. Kittery has had 36 total cases. R S U 57 has had 58 total cases. Here in Sanford, we've had a total of 137 cases. And then Saco, grades K through eight, they've had 65 cases for that. As we look at it, one of the things that we've always, at least I'll speak for myself as superintendent, I think it's important to try to have in-person learning as much as possible, as long as we can do that safely. Some of the things that have been challenging for us throughout this year as we are getting ready to look at, seeing if we can extend that. There's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that are necessary for that. The biggest challenge that we have right now throughout our district is staffing. Our staffing issues continue. Those are not staffing issues that are related to one level or just one area. They are throughout the whole district, whether it's teachers, whether it's ed techs, whether it's food service, whether it's bus drivers, custodians. We're at a situation right now where my concern is every day is are we going to, am I going to have to maybe cancel school because we don't have the staffing in place. Some of that is due to COVID related, as far as we do have people quarantining. But for that in other areas, it's just other things that have come up like they normally do. We are working hard to continue to try to expand substitutes, but that's a, that's a challenging situation, even more challenging by COVID. I know just in this, yesterday, for example, communicating with Steve Bucier, we were in a situation where we had a couple of our food services work test positive. And so we're in a situation there where that was going to be tough on whether or not we were going to have to be able to be able to offer lunch. We also had a situation where the company we contract with, with our bus drivers, same time, there's always waiting for situations where they've been very thin and we've had to make adjustments to runs or if we're going to be able to do that for it. I know yesterday we did have, our high school nurse was notified of an individual testing positive at the high school. And so that came late last night, just about five o'clock is when we got notified for that. This is, I know I was sitting down to get ready to watch the Super Bowl. So we had to go into action. A big thank you to Lynn Signore, the school nurse at Sanford High School. Also a big thank you to Steve Bucier, Ann Lur. And the data, what we were able to do is work hard to figure out how many people were close contacts and would have to quarantine. We were able to put together and send that message out electronically and send out a voice message last night to those close contacts and then be able to push that out. But you know, as we look at COVID-19, doesn't take any days off. We did send a survey out at the beginning, right, to our families, right before the holidays in December. And we did review that in terms of trying to share what we had for survey results coming back from families. We did also send a survey when we returned back in January to students in grades five through 12, as well of our staff for that. You could see that there are absolutely some families who very much would like to see us expand our in-person learning. Obviously doing that safely, of course. There's also other families who would probably be a little bit concerned about expanding that. And then also some that are not sure and are neutral about that. Beth Lambert, later on in the curriculum update, we do have the trimester ending for our elementary schools coming up at the beginning of March. So we're sending out a survey to our full remote learners, as we said we would do way back in August. That's an opportunity if there are people who are looking to transition back into the school setting. Some of the other challenges that we're running into right now for us to be able to expand in-person learning, that would probably be, there is the 50 person limit, seating limit that goes through not just schools, but also throughout the state. And right now, that's not a recommendation, that's a limit. So for us, that would be challenging for us to be able to bring more people back and still be able and make sure that we can still honor that. Some of the schools that are offering in-person learning five days a week, they have adjusted their schedules. So there are, for us, we do have staffing issues with that. We have our, our staff and our teachers wouldn't be able to have time for them to eat lunch if they had to supervise kids eating in their rooms. So that's a contract issue for us. Other schools have adjusted their schedules to get out earlier to be able to provide that time, that planning time and that prep time that is also part of a teacher's day. We did, you heard it earlier in our public comments. There's also the physical distancing that takes place. The recommendation out there is three to six feet, but amongst students. But for our staff, it's important for our staff to maintain a six foot guideline for that. Transportation is another challenge for us in terms of the recommendation that's out there in terms of how you're able to have the number of people on a bus. So if we were bringing back more people, there might have to be some adjustments to transportation. Also, as you noticed, as was predicted, there was a spike in the positive cases. That happened also after Thanksgiving. It happened after the holiday vacation in December. And we do have another upcoming winter, February vacation with that. So that's something we're also paying close attention to and something that my preference would be not to go into a full remote situation when we return after that vacation. One thing that we are looking at is trying to look at if we could have a return of people coming back four days a week, increasing that. One of the things we are looking at is if we increase that just for those people who are interested in coming back four days a week. So because we know there are some families out there that we've heard from that do not want to expand in-person learning. They're comfortable with the two days a week. But we also know that there's others that it is, it's impacting their children. It's also a hardship. And so that would be something where we might be able to look at that to say if we could extend that and put out a survey. We're getting ready to put out a survey to be able for families to see, hey, how would that be? How many people would be interested in coming back for four days? And that would allow us to look at the busing. It would look after cafeteria. It would look after class sizes. It would be looking after space to make sure that we can accommodate that. Some of the challenges that come with that, though, would be especially at our K through four levels, there would be some instructional implications for those kids who are not back in person for four days. And to be able to see how we'd be able to work that out. Obviously, our, getting the input of our faculty and staff is also important for us to be able to have them as stakeholders be able to weigh in. The other thing that I was hopeful for way back when was initially when we were talking about a vaccine. They were talking about the possibility of us having vaccines as early as January. Well, as we know, that information has come in and that timeline's been pushed back. There's been some adjustments to that schedule. Educators are essential workers right now have been moved down a little bit as the focus is more on our elderly and those people with underlying conditions. Understandably so, since they are most at risk. But that also is looked at the vaccination coming back to be able to go back from. Right now, we're looking at February to April. And any information that we get, it's right now, it's still nothing that's solid, but there is a concern that there is not enough volume for the vaccination. And if that's the case, that would even move that timeline back as well. One thing that we did send out this yesterday to our staff was we did send out a survey to all of our staff, asking those if they are, who is interested in getting the vaccination. We did try to send out some information as well on the vaccination so people could be educated on that for it. So I do know that the data is in our favor, that we are, our schools are safe. The layered approach that we are using with our safety protocols, when you compare that right now to outside of education, the last 30 days rate of new positives in education statewide, there's 34 for every 10,000. You compare that to the general population where it's 116 for every 10,000. So our approach is working with that, but at the same time, there's a lot of moving parts to this. There's a lot of people right now that staffing continues to be a real big challenge that we have that we'd be able to accompany that. So that's some of the information. Those are some of the barriers that we're facing. I'll open it up now to the school committee to see if there's any questions or any comments or any thoughts that the school committee has.
Thoughts, questions, comments, everybody?
Yeah, I do. Matt, now when you talk about Sanford and the 137 cases, we have roughly 3,300 students. Does anyone else come close to that? Waterboro, Bitterford, Noble?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, I would say out of all of those schools that we, that I've listed in York County, we are the biggest. I think Bonnie Eagle would give us a little bit of a, would be bigger than us. And I also think that we're bigger, but 57, Waterboro and 60 Berwick are somewhat close. But when you are talking about Old Orchard Beach, when you talk about Wells, York, remember Thornton Academy is just a high school. Kennybunk is smaller. Bitterford is smaller. Dayton is smaller. Kittery is smaller. So we are the largest. So yes, I would expect us to have more cases.
Matt, real quickly, that was it 157 or 137? It went 37. And if it was, is that students or is that students and faculty?
That's all cases, students and staff.
Thank you. And Matt, out of those cases, am I correct in saying that none of them were traced back to transmission within the school? Those were all outside of schools, right?
Yeah, that, I bet you're safe saying that with probably one little asterisk. There's one case that we're, right now, that we haven't been told it was school transmission yet. So we're going with it not, but there was one that might have been a potential question. All the others right now, from our standpoint, are not school-wide transmission.
Paula?
I just had a quick question for Saco. You said kindergarten through eight. It was seven cases?
Yeah, 65. And that would be higher than us for our K through eight. Saco would be higher than us. One thing I'm wondering about, and this is something that as we've been meeting with York County superintendents every Friday, we get an update because the commissioner of education meets with a representative superintendent from every region of the state, is we're pushing hard to get a statewide survey because I'm curious to see if there is a correlation between being in school four or five days a week and also maybe not being in school, being in school only two days a week, to see about those cases. So when you look at Saco having more cases K through eight than we do, you also would look at that wondering, is it because it's two days a week? Would it still be the same if, for example, if we were more than two days a week? Just something that trying to be able to look at it as you start to hear, not only here in Sanford, but also statewide and nationally, a push for kids to get back to more in-person learning.
It's really interesting because Massa B. Sick, my understanding is that their middle school and their high school numbers are very similar to Sanford's. Is that true, Matt?
Similar to positive cases?
Cases?
I would think that right now their class sizes are smaller when I talk to their superintendent. They may be similar sizes with us going two days a week and them going five days a week because similar to us at, in their whole district, whether it's elementary, middle or high school, if you choose to go remote, you do not have a separate remote option. You are still working with your classroom teacher for that. And so the teacher is doing both, having to handle both in-person learning as well as the remote learning. So I think in that standpoint, you probably have more people who are, more people who are going remote in that particular case with that. So they are able to, but I also do go five days a week. But I also think that they may have smaller in-person people or very similar to us. I don't think it's something that is something where they have more.
Well, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty confident that they have similar sizes for their middle school in the sense of numbers of like the eighth grade have, you know, over 200 students in the eighth grade, over 200 students in the seventh grade, which I'm pretty positive.
Oh, you're talking total, total numbers. Okay. No, I misunderstood that you were talking about in-person learning. So yeah, I would think that they're probably, as I mentioned earlier to Jonathan's question, they're probably similar to where we are, yes.
You know, I, I would also agree with you. It would be interesting to know the Maine, what's going on with, like what Maine would say with classes? Because Waterboro has been since September, five days a week. And they have numbers of 58 for students and staff, whereas we have, you know, 137. But again, kids, we all know in the middle school and the high school, they're hanging out when they're not home, but on their days off when they could be in the building. So that could definitely contribute to the community's spread in Sanford.
Yeah, I think that's probably, that's something that to look into. I also know that we mentioned, the question earlier was, is there any school transmission? Many of our trans, much of our transmission is happening and it's really family-based. A lot of it is family-based in terms of getting that through people's work or people in the community. And then obviously, we know that when you have siblings, you know, that's just, that's going to happen.
Any questions, Collins, anyone else?
I, I would actually just like to say, I'd like to say that I agree with Danielle, who was one of the community members that Paul Linder had a few comments to make. I, I feel like the sooner that we try to open up the school better, even if we have to do it in stages, starting with the elementary and then moving on to the middle school and then moving on to the high school. My kids, if you look at them on paper, I'm speaking as a parent now. If you look at my kids on paper, their grades are still up. I honestly don't know how they are doing it because emotionally and mentally, they're falling apart. They're absolutely falling apart. We're going to therapy. We've got, you know, crying. We've got huge anxiety issues. We've got, you know, distancing. We've got, you know, sort of like fading out, having no motivation, just being, just dragging on the floor and not being able to like pick themselves up anymore, just feeling like they have no friends. All sorts of issues. And so I feel that, yes, it's good to be very, very careful and understand that we have a lot of limits and continue to struggle to think about. have a lot of limits and continue to struggle to think about, but I would really like to, I guess, have an idea as to when we think we might be able to start opening up the schools. Is there any sort of timeline at all?
And if I could piggyback on what Paula's saying, and getting, you know, what Evan Levick was saying when he was speaking, it's about, you know, we should be able to give, or we've seen communities such as Massabesic, who have been very successful, with the proof in their numbers at 58, since September, they've been doing five days a week of in-person. I think that it is definitely time, and I would advocate, for the Sanford students to be able to get into schools at the minimum of four days a week. I definitely would think elementary first, but because of the risk versus the benefits, kind of like Dr. Shah, who was saying about kids being able to go back to sports, and the fact that there is a benefit to all of it, and there's a risk about everything we do. And I think the mental health, as Paula talked about, it's being, it's being seen everywhere. You know, the depression, the social isolation, the depression, the anxiety, I think it's time that we definitely need to start transitioning the students. And I hope that we can do it very, very soon, and hope that, I mean, my hope would be early March, to be honest with you.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I also want to say that I agree with Evan, when he said that there seem to be so many choices for people that don't want to have their kids in school full-time, but there doesn't seem to be a lot that we can do for those of us that, and for the kids that really would appreciate going back to school full-time. I'm also wondering, what, I mean, is there a particular reason why we can't do three feet, and what was the 50 persons being limit that you were talking about, Matt?
Three foot. No, there's.
Oh, okay.
In the caf, in the cafeteria.
I couldn't agree more, no, excuse me, because that's why you have to break up the lunches if you have.
But we're, but like, if anything in life, when there's a will, there's a way. There's always a way to make things possible when you're thinking about what is the priority, and it's the kids' mental health, their overall well-being, and I feel like we're at the point right now that we need to start really pushing it.
You know, Matt, I gotta say, I don't think there's a perfect solution to what we need to do, but on Evan's point about the choices, for me, that statement alone was an aha moment for me. I don't think, I'm not giving that any thought at all, about the choice for the student that wants to be back here. And I have to agree with both Paula and Amy, I think we do have to give it, we have to give some effort at this, again, earlier rather than later, because I do think it's important. And when I'm listening to those, too, I don't have children, but my children are adults now, and they're hearing these parents, and I've heard it outside of the building, outside of these meetings, and I don't know how we can do it, Matt, but I think we need to, you know, somewhere stop moving forward.
Yeah. Matt, I think you're hearing from us, as well as the community members, I know Evan, Danielle, both are involved heavily in the business world, as I am, as Dawn is, we all are. As a company, our employees, our drivers, our stores, we've missed a day of work. The rest of the work world is working. Imagine if we all closed down one day a week, we'd be in a hell of a mess. So we're tormented in society for not having the kids back in school, and I, the staffing issue, I don't know, somebody's gonna have to crack the lip pretty soon. So I think you're hearing, I'm clear, that schools need to be opened somehow, some way.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a national conversation right now. I mean, it's in the headlines in the news, everybody's concerned. I think, for me, definitely the biggest thing's that social, emotional impact on these kids. But I, you know, I hear you too, Matt, I understand the logistical issues on it. But I think we do have to keep kind of following forward, and I think that's been your objective all along, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you wanted especially the elementary kids in as much as possible, really from the beginning. So, but you know, it is interesting, because we had this discussion back last, in the last summer and fall, when we were talking about the plan, you've got the two sides of this conversation. We still have 25% of the people that are probably watching this at home right now, just can't even believe what we were discussing, getting the kids back in school, because they think that it's still such a threat and a risk, and the 25% that's really frustrated, who've seen it come out, you know, parents are concerned for their kids, they want them back in school. And I don't think you're ever gonna sway either side of that with any sort of rational discussion, because they just, that's their belief, and they're gonna believe it that way. And I kind of have to really agree with John, what Evan said about not having an option for the parents that want the kids back all the time. I think that's really where we need to start, and it sounds like that's kind of what you're talking about, Matt, starting there, figuring out if there's a way we can get classes opened up and spaces for the kids to come back, that the parents really want them back five days a week.
Four, four.
Or four, or whatever, yeah.
Like, more than you should.
Four would be a compromise, yes, four would be a compromise, definitely. And I, I would like to jump on what Dawn had said, that, you know, the rest of the world is working still. So at some point, to Dawn's words, you know, gotta start cracking the whip or something, because gotta, we gotta do this for our kids. And it's not just social, emotional for the kids, it's for the parents as well, too. You know, the parents that work our time, the parents that work full-time, the households that have two parents that need to be working in order to make ends meet. And I think it's more than, not that you were quoting actual words, Dawn, but you know, 25%, 25%, there's the people that for specific beliefs or for whatever reason, don't want to go back to school, well, then they don't have to.
They're trying to.
And they don't have to, you know, but for the rest of us.
That's too bad without an option.
Yeah, for the rest of us, I mean, it's, and it's not just that I'm, it's not just me, I'm seeing it in my kids, I'm seeing it in my friends' kids, I'm hearing it, you know, from, from everybody, acquaintances, and it's more than just, ooh, there's a little bit of, you know, mental issue going on here, or it's like they're falling apart. We've got friends that are thinking about keeping their kids out of school, just so that they don't have to quarantine, because one person, the entire class, or one teacher shuts down a whole area, because they want to make sure that the kids are still able to do the extracurricular activities that are keeping them sane. You know, we're getting to that point, because two days a week is not enough, yeah, that's right. We get to that point, where parents have to make a decision between this potential activity and education? That's crazy.
There's bigger topics, too, right? The unreported abuse that's going on in home, suicide, the stuff, all the stuff that nobody likes to talk about, is happening. School is a safe haven for lots of families, warmth, food, safety, so there's lots of other reasons why, outside of reading and writing, we're critical to get kids back in school.
Gotcha. Is there else anybody else to add?
I mean, can we talk about this in the sense of what our hope would be, in the sense, because what, what my fear is, is that we're talking about it, and then we have another two weeks to talk about it again, and then another two weeks and we talk about it again.
But we haven't talked about it this strong, ever.
The problem answers.
I think, Matt's probably biting his finger in those right now, wondering what to do next, but I think now, he's heard us, it's now up to superintendent and his staff to collect their wits and see, tell them to implement what they've heard from it.
If I can say one last thing, I think the idea of sending out a survey, which kids are interested, is, is great. I love doing surveys, but we gotta make sure that they're not too long, like Danielle had said, and that the questions are really, um, filled and clear. Because if you ask kids, do they want to stay hybrid, or do they want to go back to school, even my kids are starting to say, I don't even want to go to school anymore. I just, I would rather, you know, and I'm trying to figure it out, I'm not sure if it's because they go to school and it's just a reminder of how strange everything is, or I know there's a social anxiety component there.
To routine, isn't it?
Motivation, yeah, all of that.
They're getting lazy, they get to sleep in, oh, I have to wake up two days a week, but three days a week I can sleep in, so eh, I'm just gonna do virtual today.
Right.
I mean, and I think we're creating shuttles, honestly, it's my biggest concern, is that, you know.
And, and I'm terrified that, you know, we talk about the fiscal cliff, and I, I love that phrase personally, because I think it just really describes the situation that we're in financially, but I also feel like we are reaching a social, emotional, mental cliff here. And if we don't move forward soon, we're gonna be in a world of hurt, and it's just gonna make our financial difficulties even more difficult. Paula?
Shut her down, Dawn.
What?
Shut her down.
I don't shut anybody down.
You.
Talk as long as you want.
I didn't mean her, I meant shut her down.
Oh, I got you.
I didn't say her, but I mean, it's like a both.
So it closes up the discussion, but I think Amy, to kind of talk to you, like, rather than, because I, I think some people do feel like, okay, well, we talk about it, then nothing really happens. I think Matt's definitely got the impression that all five of us are behind getting the kids back in school. You know, but we do understand the roadblocks to that. Like you said, if there's a willow way, you know, hey, figure out what they are, try to tip them off. You know, to me personally, I think one of the biggest issues is that lack of vaccines. Like, if we could get all of the teachers and staff vaccinated, that would be huge, but that, it's gonna happen, like Matt said, the supply's just not there, so that's kind of moving on.
But that's so out of our control, that we gotta look at something else.
But then we've got, we've got a lot of state regulations, too, now, it's the quarantine, you know, so if they're in contact, they're supposed to quarantine 10 days, you know, so that throws a whole bunch of people out, when there really is probably a 5% chance that any of them are actually sick. So I think some of that, the state mandates and regulations from the GLE and the CDC need to start getting relaxed a little bit, if we're really gonna be able to get back into classroom, if we should. Okay, great, let's move on. So what do we have next? Directors report, oh, we're on to the school counselors' presentation. So Matt, how do we, are you heading this up, Matt, to get the conversation going? Do we have one of the counselors in charge?
I just, oh, I just need Matt to allow me a screen share.
You should be all set, Beth.
Thank you.
Floor is yours, Beth. I'm not adapting for the digital age, well.
So, good evening, everybody, my name is Beth Luttrell, I'm the director of school counseling at Sanford High School, and the K-8 school counseling grade level leader. I also have me Paul Santamore from the high school, Vicki Thomas and Nicole Cordo from the middle school, and Jen Spreman from Carl J. Lamb, and we are thrilled to be here tonight to talk about K-12 Sanford School Counseling. There was a lot of mention earlier about social, emotional learning, and as you can imagine, feelings are our bread and butter. So I'm gonna get us kicked off, and up next is gonna be Mr. Santamore.
I'm Paul Santamore, I'm a school counselor at the high school, and I essentially have a master's degree in feelings, so I am ready to go on this one. So this is our vision statement for our K to 12 school counseling department. So some departments have individual ones, but we have this overarching vision statement. And essentially, all it's about is us drawing a line from K to 12, to develop our kids like as a whole person, right, and help them reach their goals. So I don't want to read verbatim, I think you guys were provided a lot of this ahead of time as well, which is great, but drawing that line for kids from K to 12 is the big push for us.
Hello, I'm Vicki Thomas, I work, currently work at the Sanford Middle School. I did work at Willard for four years, and I was up at the high school last year with the eighth graders, so I've been around a little bit. I'm gonna talk a little bit how we, on how we deliver our programs with elementary, middle, and high school. We have direct services, which are services that we work directly with the students, with classroom instructions, small groups, and short-term individual therapy, or not therapy, excuse me, counseling. Then we have indirect services, where we, it's mostly about the student, and we do collabor, we collaborate through our SAT meetings, our MTSS meetings, DHHS referrals, mental health referrals, our outreach, excuse me, outreach workers that can go out to the homes, and we also do a lot of consultation with the teachers and parents. For our curriculum, we deliver our curriculum through school-wide activities, we deliver them through classroom lessons, which at the middle school, we used a second step program, and it's weekly, once a week, and I believe they use it at the elementary school as well. We facilitate small groups once a week for up to about six weeks, and we also do the short-term individual counseling as well. For individual student planning, we use assessments, we can use the career inventory to get an idea of what the student would like to do after graduation, or moving into high school as well. We do class placements, which we use data from the previous year, we consult with the students and parents. At the Sanford Middle School, we are working on academic goals with the eighth-grade boys that have two or more Cs on their report card, and we're working to get them on the honor roll. For the responsive services, we have short-term individual counseling, small groups, outside referrals, such as our teacher-school-based therapists, which at the middle school, we have two that are there five days a week. Where did I go? Oh, outreach for the families in need of services outside of school, and do consultation with the students, families, DHHS, and outside therapists and doctors, sometimes, system support. We deliver, oh, we use this to develop and manage our counseling program, and we have professional development every Wednesday, which is our ERD, and also outside professional developments, such as the ASCA and MESCA conferences yearly.
So how does a comprehensive school counseling program benefit students? So clearly, it provides access to school counseling services for all students. If you want to talk counselor language, this is what we would call a tier-one intervention, so that's something that all students get at the high school level. That might be that all students get a senior interview, and in the kindergarten level, that might mean that all students get classroom school counseling lessons. Supports students in social, emotional, academic success, and college and career readiness. Promoting a developmental approach and sequencing school counseling activities. For example, we're having a speaker this February for grades 11 and 12 at the high school. That wouldn't be particularly appropriate for ninth and 10th graders, so as a school counseling department, we make those kinds of decisions around where kids are developmentally and what they're ready for. Increases the opportunity for counselor and student interaction, equitable access for student services. We work to close the achievement and opportunity gaps for our students, especially being in a lower-income district, there are definitely those. Provides activities rooted in data and school-specified identified needs. So school counseling programs aren't the same year to year, they're really not meant to be. You really should be looking at your data and what your programs need. Maybe you had to run a grief group the year before, but your data doesn't provide needing that kind of group the next year, and that's just a very short example. And establishing a system for students' long- and short-term planning and follow-up. So, you know, whether it's kindergarten activities and elementary activities, looking at sort of career planning and what you want to be when you grow up, to high school juniors, I know one particular person, student on the school board, may have met with their school counselor today, to talk about planning for the future and what they're thinking of doing. And so that provides short-term planning, but also long-term planning follow-up. That particular student left my office with a couple homework assignments.
Hi, everyone, my name's Nicole Cordo, I am also at the middle school. I'm gonna talk a little bit about goal-setting. Every year, each school counseling program in Sanford creates three goals based on the following ASCA domains, academic, attendance, and behavior. To be considerate of your time, instead of putting all of our goals up there, we just gave an example for each, from different levels. The first one is an example for an academic goal, and that's from the high school. It's to increase dual enrollment participation by 5% for Sanford High School students. Dual enrollment means they are in high school, but also taking college classes or a college class. The next one, attendance, the example we used was for levels K through three, and that was to increase student attendance and work completion on remote days for students identified as experiencing below 25 to above 50% of attendance and work completion. And the last one is behavior, and we'll use an example from the middle school. And the last one is behavior, and we'll use an example from the middle school. And that was to decrease office referrals for bullying. Um, and any of these terms that fall under bullying, which is harassing, teasing, aggression, we wanted the whole umbrella for sixth grade boys from quarter two to the end of quarter three by 5%.
Um, our school counseling programs are comprehensive and data-driven so that we can provide services based on data only, like Beth mentioned, because our programs have to constantly change depending on what the data says. We track grades, attendance, assessment scores, behavior data. Also, the high school and middle school survey their students. And the elementary schools survey their teachers to determine students who are at risk who, or who have unmet, um, social, emotional needs. And as we heard from a lot of youth school board members tonight, a lot of students, um, are experiencing some social, emotional needs this year at an incredible rate. Um, we then track outcome data to see if our school counseling interventions and referrals to outside agencies or our Sweetser referrals are making positive impact for our students or where our program needs to innovate or improve. Um, I'm not going to read all these data points to you. These are just some bits from this year. Uh, it looks like some have been added, so I can't even read some of them. They're very little. But, um, we do want you to know that we look at all of this data, um, looking at our mental health data. You know, we've got full caseloads in most of our schools. Everybody's on a waitlist for Sweetser. Um, we'd love to see some other options for social work in our buildings that didn't involve, uh, families that needed to, uh, get into a build system like Sweetser, but we're using what we've got. Um, I know that transfer student data, I thought would be much lower this year because who needs to move during a pandemic? But lots of families are still moving and, um, we're still trying to process all of those transfers. And, um, the big thing for us is the M T S S, which is the multi-tiered system of support at the elementary level and the student assistance teams. Um, those are the referrals for at-risk students and those numbers have really been increasing. When I look at the elementary schools, for most of us, we're looking at one in three students receives some sort of intervention, either academically, behaviorally, or, um, socially, emotionally. One in three, and that's, that's going up every week.
Uh, this is me again. Um, and you may be surprised at some of the things that each level, um, handles. Um, each one common thing at each level for elementary, middle and high school is the suicidality. Talks of suicide, um, happens at each level. The elementary also teaches skills such as emotional regulation and how to be a friend, uh, social stuff, um, involvement in student academic progress, parent education, and inappropriate touch and de-escalation. The middle school does a lot of social media, um, interventions, uh, home visits. We deal a lot with substance abuse, um, some bullying and sexual identity. And the high school also deal with social, emotional needs, lots of post-secondary planning and graduation credit attainment.
I'm mute. Um, so the American School Counseling Association is the professional body that we belong to that supports school counselors by research, resources, advocacy and professional development. And, uh, they, quite a while ago, recommended that we spend 80% of our time in direct and indirect services to students that Vicki described. Um, so, uh, if Beth can hit the Maine law button. So Maine finally got on board with that. It takes a while for change, but, uh, last year, or two years ago, in 2019, Maine said, okay, you know what? This is what's best. If, if we're hiring these people with master-level degrees to handle these social, emotional, academic and behavioral interventions for students, they really need to be serving students and not doing other duties. And so they made it a law in 2019. So we were really happy to see that. Beth, do you know how to go back?
Yep.
Technology. So now, um, it's been a while that ASCA has been recommending that, uh, s- school counselors, you have to scroll down, Beth.
Yep.
School counselors, um, see students at a rate ratio of 250 to one. I know that I've been doing this. I think this is my 16th year. Um, I have almost never had that. Um, I've had anywhere from usually about, uh, 350 up to 550 students. Um, I know in the past, sometimes those ratios were even higher. But, um, for a couple of years, I, we did have four elementary school counselors for our three elementary schools. And my sweet spot that I found was really about 250, 275, which about 16 classrooms. I could actually get into all of those classrooms and do a lot more proactive work. Um, we're really hoping, you go back, Beth, that, um, Maine will go back and, and so, um, change this too. Because right now Maine's, um, Maine's funding our school counselors at 250 to one for high school, but not for middle school and elementary. They only, uh, fund at 350. So we understand that for you guys, it's, you know, it's, it's, and it's trying to prioritize money as to where is it important, where does it make an impact? But there's been a ton of research done nationally on, um, the impact of student counselor, um, ratios coming down. And it, it increases, you know, students' scores. It, um, improves performance outcomes across the country and, um, especially in lower-performing schools. ASCA will really say 250 students to each counselor is best practice. But if your school has, um, high needs, it should even be a lower rate than that. And, um, I, I, I wish I'd known that you guys were doing the survey tonight of, you know, how many students are in four days a week around our county? Because I would love to show you some data on how many, uh, what the school counselor-to-student ratio is around our county. Um, there are some districts that are just as high as us, you know, that, um, but there are some that have really made social, emotional learning and the safety and welfare of not just their children's academics, but their emotional health, um, a priority and have lowered that student, uh, to counselor ratio. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
I'm going to discuss school counseling and how it's changed a bit in a pandemic. I think when most people, um, you know, think about school, they think about teachers and kids in the classroom. So we wanted to provide you a little of how our job has changed. Um, so there's three big themes throughout all this text, um, across the, the three different levels that we kind of organize ourselves by. Number one is, um, just doing things on two platforms, digitally and in person, is, is just really hard. It's a huge challenge. I mean, I think that just makes intuitive sense. Uh, number two is addressing mental health needs has become just way, way more challenging. Sorry, my phone's ringing. Um, and it, it's just more challenging. And then it ties into that third point. Um, a lot more issues we're facing just seem to be like running into a wall, just intractable. Um, even, you know, when we collaborate and we work really hard, it seems like a lot more issues, um, anecdotally, of course, are, are just really difficult, um, and almost impossible to solve. And that's, that's disheartening.
Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit more about S E L. Um, seems to be the theme of the night and what we're currently doing in our schools. Um, starting at the elementary, they are doing classroom lessons, small groups and whole school activities. So this can look like themes. Um, I know they're going into classrooms this month and talking about careers and goal setting. Um, some really cool stuff like that. At each level, S E L is delivered very differently or can be different. Um, just so it is, um, targeted developmentally. So going to the middle school, just because that's where I'm at, I could be a little bit more specific. We have, um, once a week classroom lessons through an evidence-based program, Second Step. For fifth grade, we actually have something called Mud Agrees. So someone from the local animal shelter virtually zooms in bi-weekly and talks to them about feelings and emotions and, um, uses it with empathy in animals. We also do whole school activities. We're starting to do small groups. Um, and we also like to do, uh, monthly themes as well. So at the high school, they have monthly speaker series, whole school activities. Um, they have M L M P presentations, which is my life, my plan. It is career lessons that teach life skills such as problem-solving, self-knowledge, while also, um, teaching overall career awareness, which is really cool. They have monthly emails and small groups.
So here are a lot of words, um, but we collaborated, K-12 school counselors, looking at what are our students', um, biggest needs that we see in our particular district. Uh, we see the needs ranging from soft skills to mental health, um, dealing with anxiety, technology, uh, addiction, coping, um, consistency, whether it's at school or in the home, motivation, ability to self-regulate, um, trauma, engagement, uh, needing additional providers. I would say not a day goes by at the high school level, and I'm sure it's the same for middle school and elementary, that we don't get parent calls looking for outside, um, referrals. And, uh, for us, most of our local, um, therapists or psychiatrists have extremely long waitlists right now, months and months long. Um, and, uh, understanding social skills, all kinds of, these are really what's coming up, also parent education. And I would say when I look at these biggest needs, it's also important to know that K-12 school counseling are addressing these. So anxiety is up. A couple of weeks ago, the K-12 School Counseling Department offered an evening Zoom for parents um, and community members on anxiety and ADHD with a local psychiatrist. Mental health support, we're always trying to reach out to local psychiatrists as well as, um, therapists to see what their caseloads look like, to see if they're taking referrals, looking at trying to gain some additional Sweetser social workers in the school district. And a variety of other things.
Um, we're continuing to work and improve K-12, um, with our, our school counseling program this year. We are trying to increase education and training and the use of, um, data to drive our decisions. We're in the process of making yearly calendars, which is exciting because it's all stuff we're already doing, but we're getting organized about it. We're establishing and maintaining a school counseling advi- a school, a school counseling advisory council. Um, the high school has already done this and they're actually helping us. So middle school now has a date and the elementary school is in the process too, so it's really exciting stuff. Um, and then just support system. So how we manage, contribute, advocate, collaborate, continue to make our program successful along with that of our students because we're only as successful as our students are.
So on needs, you know, as a unit, K to 12, we came up with a, a list. And so I'm just going to read the, the bullets to you. These are kind of our biggest needs and they've actually been interwoven through this presentation, which was not planned, but actually well-executed, everybody. So good job. Um, we think an additional elementary school counselor to bring that ratio closer to 1 to 250 would be an excellent idea. Um, a K to 12 school counseling director, um, at the district level to, to help us be organized and help us work through, um, implementing S E L, which is, as we know all, super important. Um, additional clinicians from area agencies, you know, at all levels would be excellent. Um, and they have to accept main care as well as private insurance. That's the kicker. Um, you guys all know the demographics of Sanford and a lot of kids, you know, on main care or needing main care to access services. A substance abuse counselor would be great for the middle and high school levels, something we do not currently have. Uh, and then a regular ed social worker at C J L, M C S, Willard and, uh, S M S. That's akin to a, if you know Gail Fallon, who works at the high school. Um, she's a social worker on the district payroll and she really, uh, helps to lower those barriers to entry. It's free, um, and she can work with the kids confidentially. And then access to additional funds for professional development and having this presentation annually. We would love to, to present to you guys, uh, once a year and keep this a, a tradition.
Thank you. So for the school counselors, we are thrilled to have been able to share with the school board and, um, the residents of Sanford and Springville tonight, especially for us on the heels of our favorite week of the year, which is National School Counseling Week. Um, I, we appreciate the, uh, people that acknowledged us. There was one particular parent that gave us all chill pills, which are M and M's. Mine are about halfway gone in case anyone's looking to refill. Um, but we appreciate it. And for us, school counseling is a real passion, something we're all driven to do. Um, you know, S E L is sort of the big tag word and everyone's talking about it. But knowing for school counseling, that's something that we do each and every day related to the academic needs of our kids, attendance, behavior, social, emotional, career. Um, it's all part of our wheelhouse and what we do. We would love to take questions. Um, some of us would love to take questions more than others, but if anybody on the school board or at home has questions, feel free to ask.
Uh, we have any questions? Yes? Then ask away. Who wants to go first, Paul?
I just have one quick question. The last, um, the last slide that you had in there. What was the last ask after ASCA's traditional plans for professional development? I didn't quite catch that last one.
This is an annual, doing this annually with you guys would be our, our final recommendation. Yep.
One of the big roles of school counselors is to be advocates. We are the staff members at each school that principals love, but sometimes hide from us uh, because we are the ones that come with the big questions. The, "I got a funky situation here," and they're like, "Oh, no." But those are sort of what tends to happen and come to school counselors. And so for us, it's really important to advocate for ourselves, our role and for, um, school board members and community to understand what we do.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of, one thing that Jen, um, mentioned was, you know, which just kind of shot out to me was that one in every three students needs some sort of intervention. And that, you know, that is loud and clear. That's, that's a very, yeah, that's very, you know, it's concerning, but yet hopefully that those students are getting the interventions that they need. Are many of those on, because I'm looking, when you guys were at the slides with all the kids that are on the waitlist and then you're then saying that many of the outside sources are months and months until appointments can be made. Um, are small groups helping with them? Are one-on-one helping with them? And then how is the impact of those students being at home and how are they able to sort of get that support? If they're remote or whatnot?
And so one thing I want to clarify is that, um, SAT at the high school and middle school levels can be lots of different, uh, it's a big umbrella, the student assistance team. But, um, at the elementary level, we've broken it down to that as well as the multi-tiered system of support, which is a meet, a separate meeting, I love to attend, that, um, has, um, behavioral and academic. So I don't want you to think that one in three of my students needs an emotional therapy right now. Okay, but they need some sort of intervention. They could be needing, um, a math intervention or a literacy intervention. So that, that's a really big umbrella. It's not always, um, a social, emotional. Uh, we, we look at that through lots of different lenses, but most, many of those students have, you know, a dual problem. So yes, we do try to meet social, emotional, um, needs that are unmet through our Sweetser social workers by, um, running small groups, which are expanding sometimes too bigly, not a word, but our president said that. But, um, ex-president, excuse me. But, um, so we, um, we also do individual times, but we're not therapists. We're not really allowed in our role to do therapy. So we try to do like a six-week maybe intervention with a student and, um, work on a goal and then meet back with that parent and see where they're at and see if we really need to refer out. And I think that's one of, um, one of my concerns is, you know, that, that it's always heartbreaking when a parent calls you and says, you know, "My, my child is suicidal." Um, but when you can't find any help for them this year and this, you know, that's really, really scary. And, um, especially at the elementary level, you know, I would say that it's really not conducive to have a Zoom meeting on that kind of topic when you are eight years old. Um, they, you know, it's really hard to build rapport through this method. This is, this is not what kids, they've already been Zooming all day. You know, they, they did their Zoom and this is not how therapy should look. It's, it's hard enough, I think, for, um, high school students or adults to get therapy in this manner after we've been on Zoom. Yeah.
And just to touch base, to, to add to what Jen said, obviously if a kid is actively suicidal, we can get them a crisis assessment, whether it's a crisis worker to come or to have them go to the E R. But you will find that kids that even at the highest rate are being hospitalized are now coming out of a hospitalization and having to wait weeks to months, and it's shocking, before they have their first therapy appointment, even after leaving a mental health hospitalization. And so as school counselors, we're not therapists. Our role is to really do short-term, solution-focused, um, meetings with kids, small groups, check-in, check-out. But we can't be doing once-a-week therapy. But we can't be doing once-a-week therapy with kids, especially with high caseloads between 1 and 250 or 1 and 350 or 1 and 400, if you can imagine.
And that's why I, I keep advocating for that, that social work position where it's not a special ed social worker, they can see any regular ed or special ed student who could see a student whose family is a hard-working family. They work, they work over the amount to get main care, but they can't afford health insurance. I have a lot of those families who'll say, "I just don't have insurance." Or, "I have insurance, but I can't afford the copay." Or, you know, so it's, those are the kind of families that they work hard, you really want to help them, and I just don't have anything to offer them this year besides, you know, small interventions, regroup, what can we do next, what can we do next? And I think we're going to continually, every year that we can get in front of you guys, say, "We really need some more of those social workers to handle these kind of needs."
Sounds good. Well, hey, thanks for presenting. I think this should be an annual thing, so we'll keep that on the, on the docket.
Can I just ask one more thing?
Amy wants to ask one more thing. I'll let you ask one more thing.
Sorry, I was trying to give time for other people. Do you want to go?
Well, I can go first.
You, you, somebody mentioned that you are starting a school counseling advisory council. Is that for each school or is that for the district? And if so, I would like to join that. Or is this not, or is this only for staff members or parents can join or what?
I think committee member Amy Sivina, you're on a lot of committees already, so we'd like to spread the wealth throughout the community. So the school counseling, I should say that I'm somewhat related to her. So the school counseling advisory council are taking place at each school in the district. The high school, we actually have Mr. Rue on our school board, our school advisory council. And I know that every elementary and the middle school, oh, my office light just went off. See, Mr. Nelson, the electricity thing is working. We are all looking to have a school board member be part of our advisory council. We're lucky enough to already have Mr. Rue on the high school level, but the other schools would want one as well.
Invitations will be forthcoming.
I'll let you have, Paul.
So I actually have two questions. One was exactly what Amy just asked, because I too would like an invitation if possible. And then the other thing, which I don't know if I'm putting anybody on the spot or, but I'm going back to the list of asks that I have. And I'm looking at your presentation and just how organized and how wonderful all the work that you guys are providing and everything that you're doing. And so I'm wondering, you asked for a director for, oh, K through 12?
District.
District director. And I'm wondering, so based on everything that we've seen today, then what does the director do? Like, how, everything that I've done so far, he moved forward and that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I can speak to this a little bit. Just because I used to work in the Massapese district and they actually, I'm not sure if they still do, but they had a district head counselor is what they referred to her as. Essentially, they keep things organized and somewhat directive. So when, when I say that each school is doing SEL and monthly themes, for example, the Massapese head counselor would get us all together once a month during our E R Ds and say, "Okay, what is district-wide? What is everyone doing for their theme? How can we collaborate between schools and do it together?" So it's a person that keeps us organized, is in line with ASCA, you know, has that directive and can get all the schools together. So it's not all of us working separately, but on the same page. I hope that answers your question. I know that was a lot.
Yeah, it does, thank you. I think that's, that sounds.
Is there a phone? Okay, great, well, thanks, guys. Have a nice night and I'm sure we'll be talking to you again soon. So next we have assistant superintendent Steve, what do we have?
Let's make sure I'm unmuted here.
Yes, you are.
I'm okay. Good evening, guys. I just want to give you a few brief updates tonight. The first update is in regards to the Child and Adult Care Food Program, which is known as a C A C F P. If you remember back in June 2019, Governor Mills signed into law an act to increase access to nutritious foods in schools through the implementation of an after-school meal program. This law requires the districts to operate C A C F P to serve at-risk students who attend after-school programming if the district had at least one school that had above 50% of their students qualifying for free reduced meals. The meals that are provided after school are reimbursed at a per-meal rate from the federal government. Now, last spring, the school committee approved an after-school program at Sanford High School. And I'm pleased to announce that this program started this afternoon at the high school. So I'd like to thank Holly for all her work in making that happen. If you give me just one moment, guys, I lost my notes.
Do you need me to fill for you, Steve? I'll do anything I can to, I'll fill for you while you look for it. It usually involves making Jonathan come up with a good story, pretty cookies. Nobody liked my oatmeal raisin cookies last time.
Sorry, raisin, yes. I ate raisins and cookies.
I ate some, though.
Great. I'm back. The same thing happened to me last, last time in the net. Last week, I also had an opportunity to meet with the safety committee. We meet every month and we have some good news on the safety front. So far this year, we've had 14 employee accidents since July 1st, which is down substantially from last year. Last year during the same time period, we had 61 incidents. The two biggest areas we continue to see are slips, trips, and falls. And January and February is here and snow is on the ground. And so we're really paying close attention to that. John Nichols and his custodial crew have done a tremendous job in keeping our parking lots clean, and so good work to him. The other area that we are seeing staff injuries is related to our work with students. And that number is down dramatically this year. Part of that is because of the physical distancing, keeping our space from students. And also, we moved up our safety training that we do with our special education staff. We front-loaded that this year and we did that in August. And I think that is paying off for us as well. So good news on that staff front. And on the student front, once again, we've had no major injuries on the student front this year, where last year, this time, we had eight injuries. So overall, we're doing some good work on the safety committee and staff are doing a great job getting everybody safe. Updating the policy front, we have a policy that has to be reviewed and updated, and that is our graduation requirement policy. That was last updated in September of 2017. That policy was updated in time to reflect the proficiency-based learning and a standard-based diploma. So Beth and I are going to work with the high school administration staff to take a look at that and then provide an opportunity to get some input from the public on any of those changes that need to be made. In addition to that, the graduation policy that I'm going to be working on, we also, I attended a Drummond-Woodsom Conference today. It was entitled Schools, Technology, and the Law. And every time I go to a Drummond-Woodsom conference, I walk away with policies that we need to update. And so I'll be working on updating some policies in regards to that. Elementary administrators met last week and we have started the planning process for next year in regards to enrollments. So what you're going to notice is that over February break, we are going to see some advertisements for kindergarten and pre-K for the coming year. Parents, if you have an incoming kindergarten student, you're asked to call your neighborhood school, whether it be M C S, Willard, or C J L, to get your name on the list. And if you have a pre-K kiddo, call the central office and we will get your name on the list for that. We continue, Matt mentioned earlier this evening about substitutes. I continue to interview substitutes every week. We're adding one or two. And as we add one or two every week, it seems like somebody comes off the list. But we're doing our best to fill those ranks of the substitutes. And if you're interested in substituting, I encourage you to apply. That is all I have for you guys this evening.
Any questions for Steve? Good job as always, Steve. And let's move on to our curriculum director, Beth Plummer.
Good evening, everyone. Mine will be even shorter than Steve's. Just wanted to give everybody an update that I sent out a letter and a survey link, not a survey link, a Google form to our remote K to four families earlier today, letting them know that the end of trimester two is quickly approaching. It ends March 5th. And this is their second opportunity if they have students that they would like to return to in-person learning. They have until the, until Friday to let us know their choice. And then I'll start sharing that information out with the elementary principal so they can start working on the return plan. And just to give you an update, we currently have 128 students, K to four, that are working with our remote teachers. And we have 66 students still currently working on Calvert-Learning. And right before the meeting, I checked, we already had nine students that had, their parents had filled out that they want them to return to in-person learning. That's really all I have for you guys. Any questions about that?
Any questions? I don't see any. That was pretty quick, Beth.
I do try.
Okay, next we have our business administrator, Cheryl Horner.
I will not be as quick as Beth, unfortunately. So I have the financials for December and I will quickly run through those. So if you look at page one, which is the reconciliation, you'll see that the general education and adult education is about $2.3 million of revenue with $25.9 million in expenses for a net expense of $2.6 million. There are 25 special revenue accounts with activity in the current fiscal year with a combination of $3.1 million worth of revenues and $4.9 million worth of expenses. As you can see, the CARES fund are about $3.8 million of that money. I was going to do a, giving you balances on all of those. What I'm working on is having a summary for each one also, and that's taken a little while to get to compile. So we hope to have that in either January or February, but we are working on that. The capital improvement fund, which is all of our bonds, are at, the revenues are $1.1 million, that's mostly interest. And we had some movement of monies between bonds, which actually increased the revenue also. A combination of expenses of $8.2 million for a net expense of $7.1. We currently have three enterprise funds and they have $0.3 million worth of revenue and $0.5 million worth of expenses for a net expense of $0.2 million. We have trust funds, which are $19,000 in revenue and $2,000 in expenses for a net revenue of $17,000. So if you turn to the second page of your financials, we do the top section, salary and benefits are, that were spent in the school is about $12.6 million last year, or this year, which is an increase of $13,000 over the prior year. You'll see codes 53,000 through 57,000, which is including your purchased professional technology, technical services of $990,000, property services of $202,000, purchase, other purchase services of $1.3 million, supplies and energy of $744,000, and property maintenance of $169,000. The total is coming in about $47,000 higher than prior year. For the debt dues, fees, and miscellaneous, we're at $9.7 million. And of course, that reflects the bonds that we receive revenue on also. And then on the second, on the second page for articles one through four at the bottom section, our direct instruction is about $10.4 million and our staff and support is about $3.2 million. Articles set eight, transportation contributes about $0.7 million. And with Article nine, which is your facilities and capital improvement, is about $2 million. Article 10, which is our debt, which we also talked about above, contributes $9.4 million to the, in the first half of the year. Finally, Article 11, which is just our small, has small items in it, mostly PAC, contributes $19,000 and adult ed is about $0.3 million, which yields a total expenses of $25.9 million year-to-date. Expenses are about $113,000 above last year, which is really in good standing. And our revenues are at $0.9 million above last year, which is mostly in subsidy. Adult education revenue is $18,000 below last year, which is understandable. I'm assuming the class sizes probably are not the same as they were in the past. Any questions?
I will make a motion to approve the 123120 expenses and reconciliation as presented. Second? Second from Amy. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, all in favor, those are your notes. Thanks, Cheryl. Do you have anything else?
Nope, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, so that actually was under J, new business. So we'll go K, old business, we have none. L, resignations, superintendent Nelson. So you have a few resignations to announce?
Yes. Mostly around some of the stipend positions and extracurriculars as we brought the middle school back for athletics at the beginning of January. That timeline from what the original season kind of got messed up a little bit. So Brooke Berry couldn't do cheering and Christie Richards could not do basketball. So they had to submit their resignations. Also, looking ahead to the spring, Jason Lamontaine is eighth-grade baseball coach and Amy Simmons, stipend position for the Skills USA advisor. Then also two resignations, one in food service, one in maintenance, Candace LaHo and Sean Manotti.
Hey, thanks, Matt. Staff appointments.
Yeah, I want to thank Nate Mann at the middle school, Gordy Sawes. They moved quick for the coaching to be able to come and get those filled on very short notice. So a big thank you to Dave McCall for stepping up for eighth-grade girls' basketball and Moira O'Sullivan is for cheering. And then a big thank you to Joe Bolduc, stepping back up again at S R T C as the Skills USA advisor.
Excellent. Staff credits for her.
Yeah, we had the eighth-grade baseball coach, Jason got done. And so we're moving Scott Robitaille from seventh grade, he'll move up to eighth grade this spring.
Okay, staff nominations, I see none, no policies. Under items for future agenda, we have listed that four-block, five-block scheduling at the high school. I think it's actually more of just a general scheduling conversation overall. Maybe not necessarily either one of those options. But I think that's something we're going to have to wait till we get after budget season and then start talking. I do think Bella's suggestion was interesting about maybe putting a survey out there. And I find it, actually, I find it encouraging that the kids are looking to kind of make a little bit of a movement and ask for what they want. So I always think it's great when kids get out there for that kind of stuff.
John, I would like to bring Beth to maybe not name it specifically block four, block five, just call it scheduling discussion. And I can't imagine, I think there's no momentum in the school committee to want to address it. I can't imagine implementation before September of '22.
Well, this is the discussion we had before, where they talked about the original invitation to five blocks. That was kind of a quick ram through.
Too quick.
Then the switch back to four blocks was the same thing. You know, I'm of the mindset that, you know, let's do it right, you can do it once. Then the switch back to four blocks was the same thing. You know, I'm of the mindset that, you know, let's do it right and do it once instead of just flip-flopping. So any other comments on that, anybody? Um, any other uh, items for future agenda we'd like to float out there? I know our next, the dance card for the next month's pretty full with budget stuff, but.
It is your role to promote community.
Yeah, apparently. How many kids are you on? Are you going to have to keep a track?
No, why aren't you?
I love me, I love me. The more informed, the more informed decisions I make. So here I am. I'm about learning. Let me learn.
You would like a twelve-step program?
That's okay. That's okay.
Uh, okay, so then we'll move on, calendar announcements. Uh, we got a whole bunch listed here. Budget workshop, uh, Wednesday, two ten, four P M. Budget workshop. Monday, two twenty-two and four. Yeah, we have four P M. On that one. Uh, that one is actually kind of a big one. That's where we look to finalize the school budget. I know we have a regular meeting that night as well, uh, February twenty-second, starting at six. Uh, we have some uh, budget workshops, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, and then March first, um, if necessary, to finalize the school budget. And then we have a regular meeting that night, uh, March first as well. And that's where we will adopt, hopefully, the final twenty-one, twenty-two school budget. Uh, and then as we continue budget season, the city uh, budget committee starts meeting in March. And that is Thursday, P M. At six o'clock. I'm not going to read all those. We have a regular meeting on the fifteenth of March at six.
So do we know the makeup of the budget?
Uh, I'm not sure. Hey, Matt, do you have any idea? Have they appointed anybody into the budget committee? I know and uh, Anne Hanselman and Maura are going to be on it from the city, right? Or am I misremembering that?
No, they, they are representing the city with Bob Stackpole. And then uh, the members have been announced. They are, uh, I think, I can dig them up, but they're on their website, uh, but they do have it already announced as far as who the members are.
So if we do some, uh, some web, uh, internet research, we can.
I can get, I can get it. Right now.
Thanks, Beth. Do they have any other uh, calendar announcements you want to put out there, Matt?
Yeah, um, so uh, tomorrow afternoon is a Performing Arts Center Advisory Committee meeting at three fifteen. Uh, third, um, also on um, Thursday, February eighteenth is the elementary school naming, a subcommittee meeting at two. And also looking down the road, S R T C's virtual admissions open house. That's scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-third, six in the evening to seven thirty.
So I would like us to put on the agenda for next, we need to talk about the school's potential reopening and have another conversation.
Kind of part of the COVID-nineteen update?
Yeah.
I will put that down. Okay, um, anything else, anybody? Hey, uh, would you like to make a uh, motion to adjourn? Mr. Rue? Second from Mr. Maves? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we're officially adjourned. Everybody have a nice night.